First item on tonight's work session agenda will be negative impact of single-use straws. It's Kate Murray. And I have to tell you, in six years, this might be the most unique subject that we've ever discussed in a work session.
I wish to thank Mayor Wilson and City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak about the negative impact that single-use plastic straws are having on the environment. My name is Kate Murray and I have been a Fairup resident all my life. I have lived within walking distance to the Bay, and like many of you, I have enjoyed fun-filled activities such as Kids Fishing Day at Weeks Bay and Earth Day at the Fair Hope here. These events have shaped me into the young adult I am today, and I believe that every child should have the opportunity to experience them. However, if the global and local environmental crisis continues, these events will no longer exist. In addition, these single-use plastic straws are detrimental to oceans and the sea creatures that live there. Each year, sea turtles and other sea animals are ingesting more and more plastic that is killing them in tremendous numbers. We, as a community, can make a difference and help create an environmentally aware town that will benefit us all. I am here today to respectfully urge the City of Fairup to consider banning single-use plastic straws in our community. Establishments with the need for these supplies have numerous eco-friendly alternatives that can be used. For example, paper straws rigid enough not to break down in your drink, bamboo straws and a more favorable option, reusable bendable stainless steel straws. These alternatives are manufactured from practical and sustainable materials, allowing them to be used time and time again. I knew I had to take action in this matter after reading an article titled "A Moment on the Lips: A Lifetime in the Landfill." In America alone, 500 million straws a day are being thrown away in our landfills, and they do not go away. There are 10 cities in California that have taken responsibility and have recently created an ordinance that bans plastic straws. Only five other states have single-use straw bans in a couple of their cities. I want to take the initiative and request a community viewing of the documentary "Straws" by Lynda Booker. Booking a screening of straws in our community will encourage people to come together to start a movement about ending plastic straw use. If you're interested in the film, you can watch a short trailer that gives a brief history on the origin of the straw and how it is a huge contributor to landfill pollution and the destruction of sea life. There are simple and easy ways that you and I, as individuals, can start making a difference. When dining out, refuse the plastic straw with your drink. If you order takeout and are going home to eat, refuse the plastic cutlery. I personally have started making a change by carrying these eco-friendly paper straws in my mom and dad's car, so I have one handy when I refuse a straw at the fast-food drive-thru. The change starts with us. By refusing single-use plastic straws, not only are we saving more straws from ending up in our oceans and landfills, but we are also letting the culture of that restaurant shift. I've spoken to local restaurants, and they are willing to pledge against the use of plastic straws. I do believe our community as a whole will be receptive to this change, but we need to bring awareness to our community members. I had not given much thought until I picked up that magazine. The half a billion number of plastic straws a day in America alone is what blew me away. I am confident that you will agree of the urgency to take action on this matter, and that in the near future of the screening of the documentary "Straws" will be viewed by our community and a conversation will get started. Fairup has already been voted one of the best cities in the country to live in. Let's put it on the map again by making it the first city on the eastern shore that pledges to ban single-use straws. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving me the time to speak about this environmental topic, the impacts not only Fairup but the world. I have also brought a sample of the plastic straws I've been using, if you would all like to have one?
Pass them around, please. Now, I know, Councilmen, you will all be intimidated when you have to give your council comments tonight because she is quite the speaker. Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you. Council, before we start a quick conversation about this, I want to let you know that I did a little research on this today. I wouldn't say that it's, you know, all-encompassing, but I did speak to some of my friends at Dade Paper about this very item today. They had saw the, I think it came, well, they said it was on Channel 15 that was going to be up for discussion. And I said, "Well, can you give me some knowledge?" And one of the things that they said was they were all in favor of something like this, but the sheer numbers of paper straws or green straws that they would need to sell, it's a huge number. They don't think they even have the supply to meet the demands of the restaurants. So, not saying that that would kill it, but they were just one of the pitfalls. And I hope I'm not giving out, you know, competitive information, just to give you an idea of what straws cost, plastic straws, or they're about $50 per 12,000. And they said that, you know, a paper straw would be about four times that. So, we're still, we're not even talking a penny, so we're still not talking about a lot of money. But I could see if we enacted something like this very quickly, I could see maybe an issue with things like our fast-food restaurants that just can't possibly get the products to give to the people if we didn't enact this. And I know that they would say, "Well, those people that just left with their, you know, hamburger and fries and soda will..." I did that pretty good without giving trade names out. That they would want to be able to drink their soda in their vehicle out of a straw, and they just can't provide that. But, you know, it'd be nice if the people would take a stainless straw or a paper straw from home, keep it in their car. We even talked about straws made of cornstarch. They said the heat will deteriorate them. That's a green straw. And I asked if they come in a plastic wrapper, because that might defeat the purpose as well. But that's an option. Those are more expensive, but they don't have longevity. So, I think it's a really good idea, being voted in Architectural Digest, I will throw that out there, as the prettiest town in Alabama. It'd be nice to keep it that way, and something that we should think about, but just find out how feasible it would be right now to impose that on, I think probably it would be the fast-food restaurants and drive-thru windows would probably be impacted, impacted the most. That's what I found out today. There's a short, short supply of these, when you gotta buy 'em by the tens of thousands. Anyway, comments? Start with you, Councilman Robinson.
I mean, it's a big change. And I imagine, like anything else, when there's a big change, there'll be a lot of unhappy people at first. I mean, I definitely think it's something that is worth considering and at least investigating.
You know, if we start, I think if municipalities start exerting pressures on the fast-food restaurants to, say, encourage bamboo utensils, I could think of, instead of plastic utensils that are filling up the landfills, although we, hopefully, everybody's putting their, those in their recycle bin, it would be a nice change. We know that they don't all make it into the recycle bin.
But half a billion a day?
Half a billion a day in this country.
Staggering.
And they make their way into, you know, our storm waters and into our ecosystem. But, Councilman Boone, any thoughts?
Yeah, actually, I don't even use a straw. I can't get enough liquid into it. It's a whole lot better just to drink it. But the point of it is, I'm also, as Speaker talked about, I have a problem with any form, really, with any forms of the plastic. Plastic bags at the grocery stores, plastic sandwich bags that they use, because they're not disposed of properly. It does create a tremendous eco-problem for wildlife and for the environment whatsoever. So, I really applaud your initiative to come out and do it, and like they said, it was a wonderful, wonderful speech. I can't say enough about it. But I think if, you know, I wouldn't, you know, again, I don't use them anyway, so you're not hurting me anyhow. I don't even own a straw. But I think it would be a nice idea to have, to be quite honest with you. I think we need to get rid of all the plastics. I really do.
We're gonna get rid of our plastic garbage cans that they collect our garbage in? All right.
I've used metal ones for years.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, something told me you would have the cost per straw figured out by the time we got here tonight.
I didn't have time to actually...
I appreciate Kate's, you know, her stance and her position on the, on the plastic straws, but to me, it's more of a consumer-driven issue. I don't think City of Fairup needs to step in and make a straw ordinance, in my opinion.
Yeah, I probably echo kind of what Robert's saying, and Kate, I applaud you for finding in something you're interested in and taking the initiative to make a change. And although it may not be the answer you want to hear, I would encourage you to pursue the grassroots effort and go to the restaurants and sell them on the concept of why they should spend a little bit more money to do something good for the environment, that they can advertise and sell your friends and your parents' friends and on that. But I think I'm not really in favor of government getting more involved in people's lives, telling them what they can and can't do. And while I also don't use straws at restaurants, I just, I applaud you for coming up here and speaking to the council. That was very impressive. But I would encourage you to just continue the grassroots effort, try it that way. A little more work, but I think it'd be better in the long run.
I'd like to ask Mayor Wilson to at least do a little bit of follow-up and maybe ask you to ask staff to look into at least where these ordinances have passed and how they dealt with it, you know? How did they deal with their restaurants and what was the pushback? And was it even, you know, how feasible was it? At least we should get that information and know.
I'm starting an email now. It's really just bulk pricing, I think, that would get the price down. I mean, to me, it is priceless to have something that is environmentally better for our landfill, but most importantly, our non-renewable resources. And if it was a situation that the city could, you know, or at least a conglomerate of restaurants and coffee shops and things like that could buy it, you know, in very bulk volume, you know, I think that would be a start, because it's really not, it's a very low-ticket item for really anybody. I agree, the chains would be a little bit different, but they're gonna have to accommodate the cities and municipalities in California, the ones that are outlawing it. So, I think it's feasible.
Half a penny per straw. Okay. Any other comments on that? Thank you. Very good. Okay. Next item on tonight's work session is a discussion on the installation of the seasonal LED lights. Jillian?
Hey.
You doing?
Good, how are you? Um, last week, well, no, I guess it was a couple weeks ago, we had put on the agenda to do a first extension for the install of the lights. It was bid out last year, so we can put one extension out with the same term, pricing, terms, conditions. It was tabled because when we did bid it, one of the, I believe it's Bayshore Electric was the low bidder. However, one of their employees, Ben Patterson, had left the city in July 2016. So, we weren't out of that two-year time limit where he could participate in a bid. He departed with the city in July 2016, so he is, we're out of that two-year time period. So, the question came up of, we wanted to rebid this to allow a local vendor, or local vendors, to bid the requirement.
Okay. I wasn't here, so...
Yeah, I'm only brought that up, and I think I've got an, I think I got an email from Mayor last week, I don't know if y'all were on it, that it's too late at this point to try to bid that out again. I don't know if that was...
I got one with Richard Peterson, if he's here. The reason is because the group that's coming in, they came in real late in the game to accommodate us last year, but they're wanting to start. You can kind of, they're wanting to start a lot sooner than where they started before, because it took a little bit longer than they thought they were gonna take, and...
Well, yeah, and I mean, this first I heard of trying to rebid it, you know, and I think to meet our schedule for trying to get the lights up, I think we would be pushing to get it all accomplished by the mid-November tree lighting. What we are gonna do this year is look at implementing sealed, a sealed bulb that will be in some of the trees to try to offset the problem with the ground pump breakers tripping when it gets rained with the non-sealed bulbs that we have and had last year. And if those work, those strings of lights are good for three years, and if those work well, we'll try to implement it to where at least every other year, we're only putting half the lights on the trees and taking half the lights off.
Tonight, on item 14 on tonight's agenda, it's where this is being reconsidered. This is for installation of $147,800. What are our light costs going to be this year? The actual lights themselves? How many are there, how many are there, are those that we replacing?
We're bidding out 1,000 right now, 1,000 strands.
Okay.
And I think those are about $20 a strand, is that what the estimate was?
I think so.
And we had 5,000 strands left over from, we ordered 15,000 last year, and we used about 8,000 of those. So, I think we may have 7,000, that's what that number is. So, but we do want to try to put some of the sealed lights out to see how they hold up through the course of winter, and if that's a more viable option for weather-related fault, you know, we'd probably want to go that route. And those sealed lights have a three-year UV warranty that allows you to leave them in the trees for three years before you, you're not gonna be meeting the warranty after that.
Doing this kind of schedule too, if they come out, hang half, they can do the maintenance on the other half. So, they're still coming out every year, but they're doing less. You know, we're hoping that this is gonna make the labor...
Yeah, and the only reason we wouldn't want to go three years is because we think the trees grow faster than what will allow the lights to stay fastened to them. Now, if we can find some bungee type...
Well, they should have come out. They are coming out every year or not?
Well, if we do this, we're gonna try to keep them up two years, so you would be doing half, you would always be putting out half of them, hanging half, and then every year that they come out, maintenance on half, taking down half.
Right, hopefully, the 147,000 number will be in half, but now the cost of the lights will go up.
Will we keep them on year-round, or will they be only on during that season? I've heard people...
We're not anticipating leaving them on.
Okay. I've heard some people say, "I like them on every year," but I've also heard people say it kind of takes away from it being special, them being on only certain times. Yeah, I kind of tend to be one of those persons.
I agree.
Plus, they wouldn't come on until nine o'clock in summertime, was the purpose.
And we're running up our own bill quite a bit.
The question I have, we have, the lights that we have, that's not these specialty lights, is it?
No, sir.
So, basically, what we're looking at, that would be roughly what we have is half of the, what we need, is that correct?
No, I think we've got just about enough to do what we need to do this year with the non-sealed lights. We had ordered 15,000 last year, and we used about seven, but now, in the course of the year, trees will take, I mean, trucks will take lights out of trees and there's damage that occurs.
Right, right.
So, we've diminished that 8,000 surplus down to about 7,000.
But the strands we're gonna buy, are we buying the sealed lights?
Yes.
That we're wanting to buy?
Yes.
And just use, buy and put up those lights and then use the other?
Yes, as a demonstration, to find out how long, how much, how well they'll hang on the lights, yeah.
And they'll be warranted?
Yes.
They're warranted for three years.
Three years.
And Richard, I got one question just related to the cost of the 147,800 is just the expense of hanging the lights, installing the lights.
That's, no, it's hanging the li, it's hanging the lights and taking them down.
Taking them down, too.
Yeah. And I think that breaks down to about close to $100,000 to install them, and then about $50,000 to take them out.
And I know you're working towards something that would, as you said, would lower this cost...
Correct.
...each year moving forward, but if you had the opportunity, would you rather have that money put towards outsourcing the hanging of the lights, or, I mean, for 147,000, you could hire several people that would then be on staff year-round beyond that? I know you've said you have needs for that, is that not a more important use?
Well, I think you have to have equipment to go with that. I thought we had this discussion, and I'm...
Well, we have. I'm just bringing it back up.
We had it a year ago.
I know.
I think it's a good point to bring up.
In my memory, but I think the discussion went, but that's okay. I mean, I was thinking we were advocating hiring more people to do it, and we were not wanting to get that far down into having permanent employees, is what I remember of it.
But I think when you start getting to $147,000, then the council does start thinking, how many people would that get us for a year?
But we'd spend that, we were spending that in overtime.
We weren't spending $147,000 in overtime.
I have those.
No, I mean, that's what the dollar amount that y'all had assigned to the value, but that wasn't the overtime, because the cost...
It's the dollar amount for labor.
But it's not, that's not really accurate, because you've got, the people are already here, they're on staff. I mean, the employees, it's not like, it's not like we fired three people so that we could afford the outsources, you know?
And you're correct about that.
The actual overtime was, if I recall, it was like 25,000 maybe?
No, I'll pull it up in a second, but you have to understand that the employees that we want to hire in the electric department, because that's really where they were coming from, they want to do their job in that department. And that's something that was a huge relief to many who have to spend so much time doing this tedious work, and this is time that's taken away from the day-to-day. This is a lot more efficient, because they're able to continue doing their job, and that's how I want to do it, and I manage the employees. So, we came to the conclusion that contracting this out was better, even if the expense was the same, which I think we're saving money, and I'll look it up and get the figures, you know, it's better. It's better for the short staff that we have right now in the electric department. I mean, we're down a superintendent and an assistant superintendent.
Well, I wouldn't anticipate these employees being in the electric department.
They could be in any department, if they were...
Exactly.
But any department right now, it's not like we're overstaffed.
Hell's in the winter.
You know? We're not overstaffed at all in any department, so...
I mean, the credentials that we're looking for, as the mayor described, are a little bit, I mean, you know, you train a lineman, and you have a lead lineman that's, you know, qualified to work on 46,000-volt power lines, and you got him stringing Christmas lights, and you're paying him quite a bit of money to do that, too, by the way. And it's just not the best value for what we need to have people in the utility side of the operation do.
And I'm sure there's people that absolutely dreaded having to go hang Christmas lights every year, and then there's probably some folks that, maybe it wasn't their favorite thing to do, but it, overtime helped them buy Christmas, you know?
It's a training issue, and I could see, you know, if you have people trained to trim trees all year, then they may have, you know, the ability to put lights on and be able to manage all of that within their own purview of who they are and what department they work in, but...
We're doing infrastructure upgrades, too, in all of the departments, so it's just a matter of not having the staff. And this was an absolute, one of the best things we've done so far, is contracting this out.
I mean, I'm, you know, I don't want to, we kind of went through all this last year, and we're kind of rehashing the same conversation we had last year. I mean, but I can, I can tell you that there are a lot of employees that, whether they like to do it or not, they looked forward to and counted on some of that overtime, and I know that because I heard from them, and they were greatly disappointed that they had that taken away from them when we outsourced it.
I heard from many, many that were just very, very thankful that this was not part of it.
I'm not saying there aren't, there aren't people on both sides, but I'm just telling you that I heard from the ones that were on one side of it. But the other thing is, you know, I mean, when you drove through town last year during the installation period, there were many nights when I would drive home, late at night, and you would see a City of Fairup electrical truck out there assisting with the installation.
Oh, they were assisting, but they did use some of our equipment.
And so, I'm just saying, I don't think even with the outsourcing, that it completely takes the burden off of the city, because we do have to manage it and make sure that it's done correctly.
Oh, absolutely.
That's same with the clubhouse and anything else that you did.
And once they've installed them, and once the first delivery truck decides he's gonna have his window pull one of the strands out of the tree, we're fixing it back, too.
How much of our resources were they using? How much of our equipment were they using? Do you know?
I think it was the lift.
I have no idea.
Can anybody answer that question?
You don't know?
No, I don't, I don't think they...
I thought it was just the lift, I thought they had to rent.
Now, they rented their own lift equipment. I think we were there to point out where the circuits were for the timers, to test the lights they hung and that kind of thing. You know, we've got distribution panels and timers on all of those circuits, and, I mean, somebody's got to tell them where they are in order to test the lights before they put them on the tree.
Well, do we have any seasonal workers that are, and I don't think this was asked, do we have any seasonal workers that are gonna be coming off the payroll about, you know, the fall time period, whether they be golf course, marina, wherever, that, and I don't know that they would necessarily have the skill set to be in a bucket truck and hang lights, but is there, is that even a, even a possibility that we have people with a skill set that are willing to work extra to, you know, to do that?
Yeah, and I can't speak for other departments, but I'm willing to look at the labor workforce and try to determine if that's a feasible approach next year.
Yeah, and that's, I think, what we're looking at. I mean, I understand we're kind of late in the game to rebid anything or get it out now. I mean, the last thing we want to do is get to where we were last year, where everything was a couple months behind. But I would like this conversation to carry over as we look forward to next year, to be able to rebid this and, or bid this out, not rebid, but bid it out in time, so that local businesses have that opportunity, so that maybe not only are we saving costs by eliminating the purchase of new lights every year, but we're limiting costs by hiring a local vendor who does it for a lot cheaper.
Well, are we, are we really in a time constraint, that we have to award this tonight, that we can't wait until the next meeting to see if we have a ready labor pool in the city to do that?
I can't answer that question.
Does anybody have an interest in that?
I don't have a ready labor pool to do it this season, I mean, I don't know.
You're saying you'd look at it next year?
I would, I would think it would be in the landscape department is where we would want to house this group of individuals. But, I mean, Richard, I don't want to try to put anything burden on...
Well, let's put it on him.
You got, you got a couple that's fair, don't you?
Well, I wasn't looking, the bus ran flat over. I mean, you know...
Oops.
You know, there's no doubt that maybe in other cities, the grounds are mowing people as they're coming off of their normal duties, they have some time that can be flexed into that. I will tell you, in the case of horticulture, as Rick figured, the fall and the wintertime or the Christmas time is as busy as any because of the plantings that we do and everything else. And, you know, I would tell you that as far as horticulture goes, they're probably one of the most efficient departments that I have in public works, and they, they, they're high producers, and, you know, you've seen them out there at all hours of the night changing out the perennials and annuals and things of that nature. So, there is no accommodation right now, the way we're structured for that. And then I think the other challenge is, is yes, Public Works does have some seasonal part-time folks that come off the clock at the end of the summertime, such as the gate attendants and things of that nature at North Beach, but most of those are retirees or folks that were just looking for something to do for, you know, a part-time job and things like that. They would not be qualified to operate a bucket truck, and, you know, the other challenge is, is for example, Public Works only has one medium-sized bucket truck that we use for lending and things of that nature, and that would not be a sufficient equipment loading to do a job like that. So, I mean, it would not only mean that we'd have to identify a labor pool, we have to identify an available equipment pool.
Well, I would think maybe, maybe there are people in the electric department, a few key people that could be, you know, running some trucks that would, might be interested in working overtime. You might call them and say, "Are you interested in working overtime?"
And I would tell you, Mr. Chairman, I would be glad to, we should do a feasibility in the pool. How many of you folks in your 3:30 or 4 o'clock shift hours would be willing to come and work another four hours during that season? It would be an overtime rate in that sense, but, you know, who knows? There may be 25 people say, "Yeah, I..."
They do this at night, so, I mean, they start really late and go into the morning.
It'd be up to them to decide if they're interested, though.
I'm just saying that if they were trying to do both jobs, that would be a difficult schedule.
I would like to remind that last year, you'll remember, we were down a few folks in the electric department, and we sent a bunch of them off to help out with the hurricane problems we had. And, you know, there's no way you can put lights in front of the health and welfare of another city that needs your help. And not that it could, you know, it is here, but it is a possibility that during that September time, late August, September time... late August, September time, if a storm comes, your electrical department's pretty much out. And, you know, somebody's got to get those lights up where, you know, I don't, I'm kind of going both sides in the fact that then, you know, if you had a contract in place, you could deal with it. Now, if you'd used other, you know, resources, but I don't think you can implement that. I don't feel it's feasible to implement that in this timeframe now.
And I think they ran a scissors lift, I don't think they ran a bucket truck to put these lights up in the streets when they're, you know, we happen to use bucket trucks because that's what we have, but that's a scissors lift that they would use to be more appropriate for this anyway.
But I would like to apologize to everyone in the room and watching for reopening this can of worms last meeting. Should've known better.
I would love to discuss any options, but I would love to do it after we get the lights on straight this year.
Give that one more off of your list checklist now.
Jillian, anything else to add to that? Thank you. All right, next item, Midtown Medical Clinic.
I'm sorry, did you have something?
Okay, next item, Midtown Medical Clinic Board Discussion, Mr. Bob Manick.
It's about Midtown Medical Clinic Board of Fairhope and everything, which was formed, I think, back in the late seventies out of a legislative act and everything to make sure we had indigent care after some mismanagement in a place. My father was on the original board and everything, and I took over for him latter, in latter years. It has done everything that it was supposed to do. In fact, the property was transferred to the, to the management company. That's been probably eight, 10 years ago, I guess, and everything. But the money still remains. They gave, they gave the board $25,000 seed money in order to make sure that there was always appropriate management for the nursing home that was there. None of that was ever had to be used and everything, but it was there in case management had to step in and do something. That money has grown over time, and now you've got a copy of it in there. Currently, it's about 117, just under 118,000. And it's at the time where we need to go ahead and close everything out and then get that money to the city to do whatever needs to be done that y'all would decide there and everything. In order to do that, I had the board's attorney, Rick LaTrace, with Johnstone Adams over Mobile. They're the ones that handled the closing of it for us, on the transfer of the property and everything. And in order to do that, we've got to have three board members, which technically, we don't have any right now. Only reason I'm here is and everything is because I keep getting the statements on it and everything, and I wanted to kind of get it off my list of things finally. So what we need to do is, we need to, y'all need to appoint three board members. I'll be glad to continue on. I'm not going to be a resident for about another two weeks. We're moving to Silver Hill, we've got a little farm out there we're going to move over to. But I can still be on the board if you so desire, and I'll be glad to do that. If not, then you just need three new board members. Once that's done, then Johnstone Adams would prepare the papers for disillusionment that would be filed with the judge probate here in Ballin County. Once that's done, then it's a matter of just closing out the account and turning over the money to y'all, to the city. There is a little bit of expense, you see one bill in there, just under $900, and that was for him to research and tell me what needed to take place in order for this to happen. Because I want to make sure we were doing, we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, make sure it was right, so that we weren't just giving out money and then 10 years down the road, the feds come and talk to me, why did I give this money to the city? So, but anyway, they assured me that that's, this is the way to handle it and everything. So that's basically what we're here for. I know it's a tough thing when somebody comes to you and wants to give you some money, so anyway.
We have to deal with this all the time.
Cover the light bill, cover the LED light bill.
So anyway, that's, that's the whole gist of it. The email that's on the front here is some correspondence with me and Rick LaTrace and everything. And his body of the, the second part of the email there writes all this out, what I've just described to you and everything. Then there's a copy of the bill that we've gotten so far and everything, which we will close it, pay it out when we close everything else out. And it's probably going to be, I think he said originally, he estimated it'd probably be around $2,500, maybe three, just depending on the time that it takes and everything like that. And then whatever's left then would come to y'all, to the city and everything. There is a, an email in there that I sent to him this morning, wanting to clarify that whether or not I could be on the board if I'm not technically a citizen any longer. And they said that that's fine as long as I wasn't a officer of the city, which I'm not sure what an officer of the city is. Anyway, but that's, that's the whole gist of it there. So coming here today during the work session, I want to give y'all time to see the information and everything and then decide on, you need to get two or three board members to get everything set up. Give me those names and everything, and I'll get with Johnstone Adams, get them to do the paperwork so that we can get it signed and then record it with the judge probate, and then we can go from there.
I nominate Bob Manick to serve on it, and the council members can get a couple more.
That was quick. So basically, it's you and two others?
Yeah.
Because you're not going anywhere, just wanted to let you know that.
No, no, I'm still here, I'm still here, I just got a long way to drive, that's all.
Two people here that probably want to volunteer, they had a meeting there, John.
Raise your hand if you would like to volunteer, get your application in. I nominate Ben.
I nominate Ben.
Probably need to turn in a, I don't know if they need to probably turn in an application, a very short one would work. Okay, all right, we'll take, we'll get those, we'll try to get some nominations and get it on the next agenda. If we can get that on the next agenda.
Then I'll get the other paperwork started.
Got Bob Manick, Ben Smith.
One other thing, I've got a filing cabinet full of old canceled coupons from when the bond issue was closed out all through those years, and then all other files and everything like that. Now, I can't tell you what good shape they're in, because well, the filing cabinet's out at my barn in Silver Hill, so half of it's probably there and half of it's probably eaten away. But do y'all want that stuff, or what do you want me to do with it?
Ask the clerk if we need to keep it.
Kevin would like it. You give it to Kevin.
I'm sure if I keep it, it won't be here, you're looking for it next year, it won't be here.
Okay.
He makes sure all that is.
Well, it's where your hazmat suit is.
I got the same barn he's got.
It's rough, so, okay, I can do that.
All right. Thank you, you know, Mr. Manick, thank you for staying on top of this. You've been communicating with me for about a year on this.
Well, I apologize.
But the rate of return was so good, I just said, hey.
Actually, I left the money there originally because I thought, if something comes up, we got some money that'll defend something anyway, you know, and.
I don't think by law we can keep it in investments, but it's yielding about eight point something percent right now. I know.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob, thank you, thank you. Okay, Yacht Club and Channel dredging discussion, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, and we have Mr. Hollinger here too, you want to come on up and join us? As you know, the Yacht Club came and spoke with y'all several months back about their process of getting permitted to deal with the dredging of the main channel that comes into the Fly Creek and to the various harbors and marinas there. And I may have misstated a little bit, but y'all are very close to having that permitting process completed. And, and they have gone through the process of attempting to get multiple quotes for the actual work. I know that when Mr. Hollinger presented months ago, that they were looking at doing this in phases, and it just turned out that that was not practical. And the number that they have that they're dealing with right now is $344,060, which is significantly more than.
Say that again?
$344,060. And that's covering everything from permitting to any other jurisdictional permitting requirements, as well as a pretty generous for state lands for the sand processing removal. That is still an item of negotiation that hopefully will come down in price. And again, at least the proposal is a cost sharing. And the mayor has been very proactive, and we have a meeting set up with another stakeholder there in the marina on Tuesday. And we're going to at least encourage or ask that maybe they become partners as well, to try to spread that cost.
Can we put a gate there?
Well, I thought about a chain and, you know, $10 to come across, so. So that's kind of where we are. I will tell you, the one thing I don't know the answer to, and I've not had a chance to have this conversation with our city attorney, is, you know, my understanding is if the council wants to participate and they determine it serves a public good or public need, and I think having that channel navigable is a public good because not only it serves the interest of the city with Fairhope docks, but anybody else that uses that harbor for safety or for refueling or tourism or whatever, that's a public good. The one thing that I'll ask Marcus to clarify, is there any conflict or potential compliance issue with public bid law? Meaning that, that in essence, this is a public works project, but it is being initiated and conducted by a party outside the city, and we are going to be a financial participant. And he can, he can clear that up when, if you choose to move that item forward. But that's where we are, at least the knowns are more known than they were when we last had this conversation. And, you know, I looked over M&amp;M's quote on this work. They are a very reputable company. $10 per cubic yard is within the normal range of this type of work, especially for channel dredging. You know, it is problematic that if, if we work it out where we're able to take that material and re-nurish the beaches, that we're paying the state the honor to relocate state lands from one part of the water body to another, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. But I'm sure they're suffering budgetary issues and are looking for sources of income. Be glad to ask, to answer any more questions. I don't think there's anything imminently before you, but I think eventually the Yacht Club would probably like you to take it up in a, in a meeting of the council sometime in the future to decide what level of participation the city would do.
I think we might be able to ask our contracts officer, it would seem to me, being public funds, it definitely would fall under state bid law. Can you answer that, Jillian?
I would think it, I would think so.
Yes, I don't know that we can enter into something that hasn't been bid when municipal funds are involved. So I think it would have to go through a bidding process. That, if we can get a confirmation of that, I know you said, ask the attorney, but I would ask our contracts officer that question. I don't know how in the world you'd get around it.
Wasn't there something that we helped pay for that was originated with, I think it was in plumbing?
Well, I know that, you know, Marcus, with, with the Portico public-private partnership, that the conflict was when we were trying to do the material part of it, it did run afoul of public bid law. But as long as the third party that was providing the public good did all of that, and we just made a financial for the public good, then it didn't run afoul. That's, and I kind of see this as being the kind of same thing, as long as we're not in the procurement part of it. But I don't want to speak for the attorneys or for the person agents, and that's something that has to be vetted. I mean, there's no doubt about it, it has to be, it has to be answered. And I don't, I don't, that's why I wanted to bring that concern to you, that before we make any recommendation at this body, we're going to make sure we have that, that I dotted and those T's crossed.
Council, any questions or comments?
Nothing, just make sure we, proper research before we.
You say you've asked Marcus?
I have not, that's one, that's on my list of things to do, so. And, and, you know, I, he's pretty, pretty attuned to this type of thing, and hopefully we'll be able to make sure that we have a comfort level that we, if y'all decide to move forward in a participation, that we can without any, any problems there.
Mr. Hollinger, what would that do to the Yacht Club's commitment, should we have to put it out for bid? Is that going to delay it? I mean, I'm kind of, you're kind of in the same boat we are. We, we like the fact that we're sharing in the cost, but does that, are you, are you in the yacht? Is the Yacht Club in such a hurry that they would say, well, we're going to move forward without City of Fairhope? I can imagine that scenario, but it could be delayed some.
I don't think so, but I don't know how long that process would take. I mean, I would need some idea of, you know, how long does a bid process take? And I would welcome a second bid for the same reason the city wants a second bid. I have not been able to acquire as hard as I've looked.
It looks like you've got a pretty good set of bid specifications in here already, which is part of a time-consuming part, and then you have to have pre-bid meeting and advertise it and put it out and solicit bids, and you'll award it.
Well, the good news is, is that I think they would probably be willing to give us their professional service product that they've already produced. So really, all we would have to do is put together a bid spec with that professional product and put it out on the market. And what we would do, our roles would reverse. Instead of us writing them a check, they would be writing us a check because we would take that project on as a public works project move forward. And the outcome may be identical to what it is today, meaning that right now, if there's, you know, there's not a lot of dredging companies in this area, but there are several. But they, they bid based upon what they've already committed to work, you know, and so we may end up with the same person submitting the same set of prices.
Wouldn't this already be known? This would already be a known bid.
No, it wouldn't, in this sense is that, you know, there's been a, a process on the private side that there's no, you know, there's really not, I mean, we, it would be, it would be a straight up, here is the project, put your best bid in and go from there.
I just think it's unfair because there is a known amount now because of the original bid.
They know what to shoot for now.
What if we, and what we also want to entertain, what we had discussed, I guess, a month ago or so about starting from Fly Creek and getting, you know, we had discussed going from there to this point.
Right.
In some meeting, would we want to rebid just all encompassing and then have, have the Yacht Club cut a check for their portion of this and do it all, all under one time while we're already in there?
That may be something, that would add time to it since we're just starting, we just had our, our meeting with the, with the design professional on the permitting for our part of the slips and turning bases on Fairhope docks. And we hope to have a, not to exceed price back to you by the next meeting, but I don't know if we'll get, we'll get that information by Wednesday to submit it to Lisa. So it may be the second meeting in August before you see it. If that, if that opportunity presents itself, yes, it would be for us to put it out the bid, that there would be the channel dredging and then as an add-on.
You have addendums to it, you could say, you know, City of Fairhope's, you know, responsible for addendum A, B, C.
Yeah, so if the, if we can turn it that fast, I would absolutely, we're talking about, you know, trying to economy of scales.
Yeah, absolutely, we're all for saving money because we're half. So we, if I could have found two bidders, I'd have already brought that to you, or at least had two and.
Well, it's not unprecedented for a price to be out there like this price is out there because there is an agenda item tonight in which there was already, you know, a contract that existed at a certain price, and it was rebid, I mean, people know what that bid was, so.
I, you know, I'm not worried, if we have to go.
The way it is.
If we have to go through that process to make sure that everything is kosher, that's fine, we can handle that. And it may give us enough time to incorporate the work that we want to get done because, you know, the one thing you're saving is that mobilization and demobilization cost. Because that, you know, that's.
And that's got to be a lot.
It's, it's real money, yes, so. All right?
Okay, well, I would ask the clerk to, if you can get us, you know, if we can get something on the next agenda to authorize you to put it out for bid, then.
First, we're going to find out if the city can partner right.
I will at least ask the question and get an answer, and then, you know.
Let me know, and if so, then if we have to, if we have to put it out for bid, then we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay, we'll do that.
How wide is that channel that you're proposing to dredge?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet?
Well, there's sixty and there's a 20-foot overage in the first eastern half of it because of the traditional silting. So it's a 20-foot overage and a, for the, just beyond the jetty. So it's primarily sixty.
And this, this work, as it's being, as it's specked out, doesn't do anything to address that traditional silting, right?
Correct.
It doesn't do anything. It doesn't do anything for jetties or any of that work.
And, and that is, you know, one of the things that, that is desirable to, to look at, especially on the north side, is adding kind of a wing wall on that north jetty so that if we put sand on the beach and as those currents wanna move it, it keeps it from spilling back over into it. And, you know, that's a whole nother permitting process and it's not, it's one of those things, it's not expensive work to do, it's just time-consuming to get the permit to do it. So, and that, that's one of the things that we, we're asking the design professionals to at least give us a price on what...
Are we missing a prime opportunity to do that, though? It's a time trade, but, you know, I don't know.
I mean, I, you know, I think the yacht club would be willing to...
Entertain.
Yeah, to, to look at, okay, what are we talking about? Are we talking about months, six months? You know, because we're, you know, our expectation was if we were just on our own, it would be August through September, but certainly by spring because I don't think we can go another, what's happening is it's getting worse.
If we can do something to prevent us from having to dredge every so often, that additional work now, that investment we all make now would be well worth, you know, to save us in the future.
I think if you did it within a year or two of this dredging, this project, it would be, it would be, it would be good.
But you're talking, as you said, we're talking real money when we talk about staging and...
Well, in the case of expanding the jetty, the, the, the actual construction part of it is, is not terribly expensive or terribly difficult. It is getting the permit to do it because you're putting a, you're expanding a structure within waters of the US and, and the lands of, of the state and they just, they make it difficult. I mean, it's doable, it's just, it takes time to get the permit. And, you know, I, I think realistically, it's, it's probably a minimum of twelve months to get a permit to expand that, that jetty. That's, that's the big problem.
Best case, maybe take it off.
But I think it's a great idea for the future because if this is an every-five-year occurrence, which traditionally with the Corps of Engineers, that's what it was, having that out there for...
If you can make it an every-seven-year occurrence, it's...
Oh, yeah, and I think, you know, designed correctly, it would be a big deal because that's two or three feet.
And somebody asked me this.
Makes a big deal.
When was the last time the channel was dredged properly? Do you know?
It's, I'm thinking probably going on seven years.
Okay.
And it's, they typically did it, the Corps did it every five, pretty much right to these specs that I've given you. And we were hoping, like Richard was saying, to do that phase one, but it would just, we'd have gone out, X them out and run it around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellis.
Okay, impact fee recommendations? Mr. Johnson again, Mr. Cortinas?
I'm a little...
And Mr. Griffin, Tishler Bice?
All right, good afternoon. What this is, and I think everybody got a copy of it, the impact fee ordinance that the, that the city adopted, I believe, was in 2007. One of the things, it's been updated, yes. It actually calls for a reevaluation of that ordinance, I believe it's every three or four years. It hadn't really been touched since the ordinance was originally done. The dynamics and the metrics of, of how that ordinance was put together and the fee schedule was put together have changed from 2007 till '09. So, the, the city contracted with Tishler Bice to go and do the research again, go and, and try to give us an idea of what those fees should be. Maybe they should stay the same, maybe they should increase. And Ben's here and I'm gonna have him kinda give a quick recap again so you understand all of the legalities that go along with it and understand, you know, they provided us a report, gave us some updated fees in that report and kind of explain how they came up with those numbers.
All right, Mayor, council members, thank you for having us. Give me that so I can control the...
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'll, I'll move through the impact fee 101 stuff pretty quickly since I think all of you were here last time that I was out. All right, so we're looking at four fee, four fee components. So we have parks and open space, fire, police and transportation. All right, so impact fees are their one-time payment for growth-related infrastructure. Generally, you collect that at the time the permit is issued. Generally don't use it for operations, maintenance, replacement, those sorts of things. It's not a tax, it's more like a contractual agreement to build infrastructure and you really are looking at three things. So there's need, so we have to prove that there is a need for the infrastructure or the improvement benefit. So we have to prove that, you know, one, you live close enough to the improvement to receive some sort of benefit, but also you have to, you know, the cities can actually have to build the improvements so you receive the financial benefit from that. And then proportionality, basically just saying, all right, different types of land uses generate different types of demand for services, so we just need to take that into account in the fee calculations. So there are three types of methodologies. There's cost recovery, which looks to the past. So if you have any oversized facilities, essentially if you have any debt service, you can use impact fees to have future development pay for their share of that excess capacity. There's incremental expansion, so that just says, all right, well, if, you know, we have this many acres of parkland today, we wanna maintain that going forward, so this is what we would need to charge to do that. And the last one is plan-based, so, you know, in this instance, you know that you want to build something in the future and so you say, all right, well, you know, if we're gonna build this, this is the, the growth share, this is existing development share, that way everyone is treated equally. Oops. All right, so this is just an overview of the process. So first off, you just essentially wanna know your existing development and then figure out how much you'll grow over the next five, 10, 15 years. Then you can determine your level of service, so you can look at your existing infrastructure and, you know, determine, you know, how many acres of parkland, how many, you know, police vehicles do you have per person, for example. Then you look at, you know, the, the appropriate indicators of demand. So for parks, it could be, you know, persons. For police or fire, it could be, you know, the amount of vehicle trips generated by types of development. And then for transportation, again, it could be vehicle trips. You know, we, we did look at a few different methodologies to, you know, really figure out what worked best, looked at credits, and now we have the, the fees to show you today. All right, so quick review of what we're saying is existing and future development. You know, we're saying over the next 10 years, about eighty-three addition, eighty-three-hundred additional residents, so that's just over thirty-seven-hundred additional housing units, four thousand fifty new jobs, which translates into about 1.6 million square feet of non-residential floor area. All right, so for fire, this includes fire stations and apparatus, so both of these use an incremental expansion methodology just to maintain your current level of service. So over the next 10 years to maintain your current level of service, you'll need about eighty-four-hundred square feet of fire facilities at a cost of about 2.7 million and you would need about eight additional apparatus at a cost of 1.6 million. Because this is an incremental expansion methodology, there is no existing development share, so impact fees pay 100% of the cost for fire infrastructure. All right, so with those two components, your single-family fee would be about 8.79 per, per unit, which is an increase of about $74 compared to your current fee. Multi-family actually goes down slightly in this, this scenario. But then, this is the fee schedule showing each, each of the land uses outlined in the ordinance that you're provided. All right, up next, we have police. So again, this is incremental expansion methodology, so we wanna maintain the current level of service for police stations and police vehicles. So to do that, you would need just over 9,500 square feet of police stations over the next 10 years, which would cost about $3 million. You would need 17 additional vehicles and that would cost about $622,000. I do believe animal shelter is also on here, but I don't see a bullet for it. But that one, I believe, is maintaining square footage, if I remember correctly. So with this, you know, a slight increase on the single-family fees, they're about 7.42. Again, it outlines each component at the top, so police stations, animal shelters and vehicles, and then at the bottom, that is, you know, the, the different types of land uses included. All right, up next, parks and recreation. Again, incremental expansion methodology, so we're looking at land, facilities, amenities, vehicles. So over the next 10 years, you would need to develop about 75 acres of land, which would cost about 5.5 million dollars, and you would need to construct a little over 16,000 square feet of recreation facilities at a cost of about 5.5 million. So with this, you see the, the line item for each of these. These are only assessed to residential development and lodging, not assessed to your, your other non-residential categories. All right, up next, transportation. So this is broken out into two components. So we have the plan-based methodology, so these are your traditional capacity improvements. So you have, you know, signals, you have roundabouts, you know, access. So with these, you've identified about 5.1 million dollars in projects and based on the increase in vehicle trips over the next 10 years, you know, we come to a, an average cost per VMT of, you know, about $172, which you'll see in the, the later fee schedule. But, you know, all of these are identified as, you know, traditional capacity projects. Up next, we have the resurfacing projects, and so these are outlined by fiscal year and you're just over 4.1 million in this. Again, we're, we're gonna divide that cost by the increase in vehicle trips and that number is too small for me to read.
Thirty-seven eighteen, average.
Thank you. All right, so up next, you can see at the top the component, so you have, you know, about 171 for the capacity projects, 37 for resurfacing. There is an opponent for vehicles, which is $18. So that gives you a capital cost per vehicle trip of, you know, just over, you know, just under $230. And so basically what it's doing is taking that capital cost, multiplying it by the average weekday vehicle trip ends, which you see towards the center, and then it multiplies that by the, the trip adjustment. So, you know, when you multiply each of those for a single family, that's, you know, about $1,200 per unit. All right, again, the, the cash flow on this one, because this does have a plan-based component, there is a, a growth share and an existing development share, so this is the only fee component where the fees don't pay 100% of the cost, but that's because existing development has to pay their fair share of some of these components. All right, any questions?
Sir, oh ma'am, I'm sorry. Well, and let's see if they have any questions for, for Ben and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Robert, Jimmy?
Yeah, so what was the, the cost of the residents those numbers were based on? Those figures for, you know, the residential impact fee for the police, fire, transportation?
Yes.
When you had these numbers?
Yeah, so all of those are just essentially saying, all right, this is the cost per person or the, well, for, for single family, it would be cost per person of each component. You multiply that by the average density, so I go back a couple...
And let me clarify, the, the chart you're looking at are our current fee schedule. The second chart that's in the back is the proposed fee schedule, okay?
And 1% is the cap.
Ma'am?
1%.
That is correct. 1% is the cap. So the, the unshaded...
What is that, what are these numbers based on? I mean...
Okay.
So with, when, if you look at each of the fee schedules within this report, so for example, you know, parks and recreation, the cost per person is $1,290.40. So that's just the sum of each component and you multiply that by the average persons per housing unit in a single-family unit, which is 2.32. And so that's how we're coming to that number, basically saying, this is what it costs per person and then saying, all right, well, what's the average occupancy for different types of land uses?
So since we've got a cap that's based on a, a max of 1% fee, not to exceed a certain dollar amount.
Correct.
Do we then take those numbers and convert them into a percentage rather than...
Right, correct. Yes.
So these percentages essentially should add up to...
They're not gonna add up probably to the numbers that are in the report because they have to do it based on a mathematical statistical analysis telling you what that fee should be to be able to keep up with the growth. But the way that the state enabled this legislation, they said you cannot charge more than 1% of the cost of the project. So I can tell you, I mean, you know, like, the fee that should be for every single-family house is $5,830. We're not gonna hit that unless the house is $583,000. So if it's a $250,000 house, then we're gonna collect a $2,500 impact fee because that's what's governed by the law that, that the state legislature gave us.
And if it's a $2 million house, you're still collecting...
583, that's the max that I can charge. It's either the 1% max or the max of the number within the ordinance.
So what would be our shortfall in 10 years? Do we have any, do we have that...
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say because it depends on the value of the houses being built. We're gonna have...
You'd need the average price of the home projected over the next 10 years.
I think we're... We're running 300, I think, what is our average home price, about 3, 3, 3 plus? So you can, okay, if we do, we're averaging between 400, probably around 400 new houses a year. It's been our average over the last three or four years. So you, you know, factor that times 3,500 and some of those will be outside the city, but 80 to 85% of all the new homes built are in the city limits. We've got a couple of subdivisions that are outside the city limits. We cannot charge them impact fees if they're not in the corporate limits. So they won't pay an impact fee at all. Average, you're gonna have maybe 3, $3,500 per house on an average house price, but then you're gonna have some that are in that $500,000 range, you're gonna pay a little more. You're gonna have some that are gonna be in the 250 or 300,000 range, you're gonna pay a little less. So it, we're gonna fall short of collecting the numbers that the report says we need and that is triggered by the legislation and the, and the 1% cap that we have to live by.
So if we change our allocations based on what's being recommended here, that only changes moving forward. It does not, we don't get to go back and reallocate?
We don't get to go back, no, please don't ask me to do that, oh lord. Yeah, but anything from, you know, from the time this permit is adopted, then any permits that are submitted after the formal adoption date of this ordinance will be subject to the new, new fees of the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay? And if you look at the two, and you may wanna put them side by side, you know, the old fee had commercial shopping center and it gave you 10,000 square feet or less, 10 to 25, and it broke all that down. To be, you know, the new, the analysis they gave us was just a per thousand square foot cost based on occupancy classification. So we simplified it instead of having all of those internal breakdowns, which I never hit those numbers anyway. We always run, actually, I had one two weeks ago that actually paid the, the assessment that was in the ordinance based on the fee schedule. That's the first one I can remember in three years. So we simplified it, you know, just to, and there's other things when, if you have any more questions for, for Ben, he can answer those as far as how he came up with the numbers. And then I'm gonna walk you through real quick the changes that, that we wrote into the ordinance to try to close some of the openings that we had in the ordinance.
Counsel, I'll also give you a heads up that Eric has requested, and I would like to grant that request, to put this introduction of this at least on tonight's agenda. It would, it would lay over, but at least it gets it out there and we'll have almost three weeks to study the numbers. Doesn't mean you have to pass it in three weeks, but at least it, it, it might save us three weeks' time. At, at the pace that we're growing, weeks matter.
I just, you know, the way that we're going, I don't know from day to day what kind of submittals I'm gonna receive and we've got, and I'm not gonna name any of them, but we've got some very significant projects that have been done or been issued permits or have submitted for permits in the last month and a half that are very significant changes from what the use was originally to what they're doing now and has a lot of impact. You know, tremendous more trips and cars and all of the things that this ordinance is designed to try to help offset the cost of. But the current ordinance and the current policy that we have been operating under since the original ordinance was adopted was if you have a structure, didn't matter how it was used, didn't matter what it was, if you had a structure on that parcel, you were exempt from having to pay an impact fee. were exempt from having to pay an impact fee. You know, one of the things, when we get to it, I'll kind of walk you through how we address that within the ordinance to kind of determine more the use of the structure, because a three-bedroom house with four people in it and maybe three cars is not the same as a three-story office building that's going to have 60 people in it, and you're going to have cars everywhere and trips on the road and all of these things. Those are the things that are getting missed the way the ordinance is now. And like I said, I don't know from day to day what I'm going to receive as far as submittals. The earlier we can, we can look to adopt this, the quicker we can kind of close that gap.
Yeah, so councilman, you know, the 1% doesn't change, the max does go up if the, you know, value of the structure's over that 580,000, but just looking at percentage changes, Parks and Rec was 55% of the fee, now it's 51, so Parks and Rec get less percentage. Fire was 19, now it's 15, so it dropped a little bit. Police was 4%, now it's 12.7, so that significant increase there. And transportation was 22%, now it's 20, so shifting the percentages.
Correct. And actually, I'm going to do this...
I like the way you said it wasn't a tax. It was a more, what was the creative way you said it?
Uh, it's a land use regulation.
Cooperation, something like that.
And I am, and I'm going to ask Lisa to forgive me, because this was what I originally sent her. I actually printed, this is the final, what I'm looking at is the final draft of the fee schedule. I'll get you a copy, because what we looked at were recommendations as far as how we thought we needed to divide up the fees. In speaking with Carson and Ben last week, we really, from a legal standpoint, we need to use the percentages that they gave us, because that is justified based on the, based on the analysis and legally defensible if anyone were ever to take issue with the ordinance wording. So I had sent the original one that Lisa put in there, was the old one, and I missed getting her the new one. If you look at what I just handed out, the color version, that is exactly the numbers that Ben gave us, and the percentages are exactly based on the numbers they gave us. There's no recommended percentage in there. It is based, we have to use the percentage breakdown that they gave us, the way they broke down the fees. And I apologize, Lisa, I'm sorry. I didn't get it to you in time. The, and I'll go ahead and start walking you, there's really a couple of things that we're going to go through. If you go through the language of the ordinance that you've been provided, I had printed the red copies, they didn't come out with the ones you have, and all I did was add specific sections. We didn't rewrite the entire ordinance, you know, 90% of the ordinance is the same, but we added some language in there. If you will go to section seven in the ordinance write-up that you have, and it's titled "No Additional Capacity," the original, or the wording that was in there is "No impact fee may be assessed or expended upon construction, improvement, operation, or maintenance of any infrastructure that does not create additional capacity." And it didn't really break down exactly what that is. I'm big on definitions, and it didn't really give a definition. So what we did was, we defined it under bullets A and B. "The following shall be exempt: alteration or expansion of an existing dwelling unit which does not result in additional units or increase in the number of families for which the unit is arranged, designed, or intended." Then the B section, "The replacement of a building or a dwelling unit where no additional square footage or units are created, and when the existing and replacement or dwelling unit are located on the same lot." So that kind of gives, you know, that tells you, if you've got a three- or a four-bedroom house, and you're tearing it down, and you're building a three- or four-bedroom house, you're absolutely exempted. Section eight, though, does cover changes in size and use. And what it states is, "An impact fee shall be imposed and calculated for alteration, expansion, or replacement of a building if the alteration, expansion, or replacement results in a use that's determined to generate greater impact than the present under the applicable fee rate." And it breaks down, "If the impact fee is based on a per-dwelling-unit method, the fee shall be the amount due under the applicable impact fee rate schedule, less the calculated rate." And so what that means is, if someone is tearing down a two-bedroom cottage, and they're building a four- or five-bedroom home, the impact fees are based on generally the number of bedrooms, because that dictates the number of occupants, which dictates how many vehicles you have, how many trips you're generating, use of infrastructure. So there will be, what will happen in that case, is the fee for a single-family is a certain amount, will calculate what it would be based on the new use or the expanded use, and they would get credit for what they originally had, but pay the overage on anything more they do. So that would be, it's not based on square footage, we're going to base it on the number of rooms, because that's indicative of how many people you actually have, and that's what, that's what the...
Based on room, based on room or bedrooms.
Bedrooms. And to further clarify, because as a code person, I get into many discussions with architects and builders about offices and bonus rooms and theater rooms, and this, that, and the other. So within our city building code, we define a sleeping room, bedroom, as a room that has a door and a closet, whether you're calling it a office or whatever. That is a room, and that's how we're going to calculate it. If it's got a cased opening and it's truly a bonus room, that's fine. That's, we don't count that as a bedroom. But we get into that because, you know, from a building code standpoint, if it has a door and a closet, it's a potential sleeping room, and we require those rooms to have egress windows and smoke detection. Bonus rooms are a big example, because, you know, sleepovers with 10 kids in a room, that room needs to have a way out, and it needs to have a smoke detector. So that's how we define it, and that same definition is what we're going to use when we do the evaluation of the existing versus the new. We use that same metric. That covers those two, and the other thing I did was, being a building code guy, one of the things that helps me, and architects will want it, if you go under definitions, which is towards the front, the former ordinance just said, "New development means what is defined in the enabling legislation." So you have to go, and you have to go back 2006 and find the legislation. I cut and pasted exactly what the legislation says, so we actually have a definition of what new development is within the ordinance. Then the other thing I added was, "The International Building Code breaks down the use of a building by occupancy classification." And so I added the definition of that, and if you go to the new fee schedule, you will see every line of use is broken down by occupancy classification. You have, you know, a single-family residential is classified as an R3, multifamily is R2, R3, and R4. So those all fall within the numbers there. Lodging is an R1, because that's a hotel. That covers hotels. Then for the commercial uses, we have, you know, assembly, mercantile, business, educational, they are all assigned a classification. So when someone submits a set of plans, we're going to make the determination of what that occupancy classification is, and then they will be charged the impact fee based on the rates of what they're assigned. So it actually helps, it should help, especially our designers, because, you know, architects and building folks kind of think in the same terms, in terms of use and occupancy. Clear as mud?
Yeah, I get a little confused. You know, you said, if you've got a two-bedroom cottage and you tear it down, and you build a five-bedroom back, then you're going to pay an impact fee on those three extra bedrooms.
That's correct.
You're getting a two-bedroom credit.
That is correct.
So let's play this scenario, say you've got a guy that's building a $400,000 house that has five bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
He's going to pay a $4,000 impact fee. You've got a guy that's building a $2 million house with three bedrooms, he's going to pay a...
He's going to pay a max of a $500, $5,800, minus what he had.
No, but I'm saying that the house is on a new lot.
Right.
So the guy with less bedrooms is paying more, because his house is more.
To some extent, but, you know, I mean, and I see, we see...
That's not something that is.
Well, I see, I see what you're saying, but I mean, I'll say this, I've never seen a two, and we've had multimillion-dollar plans submitted, I've never seen a three-bedroom, $2 million home. I mean...
I'm saying, one scenario you base on the amount of bedrooms, the other is based on the cost of structure.
Fair enough. I guess if you want, we could go the square footage route, but see, that's still not going to benefit your owner and your scenario, because even if it's a three-bedroom house, it's by square footage percentage, it's going to be much larger.
But I think, like I said, it should be based on bedrooms. I mean, if that's...
And that's what I, that's what we're going to do, is bedrooms, because I, and I'm going to ask you for your opinion, but I would...
Instead of costing the structure.
Well, but, I understand. If we do that, we're going to have to completely redo the fee schedule to what is the cost per bedroom. I was trying to find a way to give credit to folks that are tearing down an existing structure and not charge them, you know, a brand-new fee. Give them some credit, and bedrooms, I think, was probably the best metric that you could use to judge impact.
I agree. I just think bedrooms should be used across the board, then, if we're going to use it in that scenario.
Then you're potentially, you know...
For a very small home, you know, it would be...
You could, and I mean, actually, if you want to use, I guess your average home is three-bedroom, two-bath, so if you want to take 5,830 and divide it by three, that's the cost per bedroom, and if someone goes from a three-bedroom house to a five-bedroom house, then you'll pay whatever that divided amount is by two.
Right.
And that's kind of where I was intending to take it.
That sounds good.
My biggest thing is the one who kind of looks at these and calculates these, I want as simple a fee schedule as possible, because it's...
And it needs to be driven by capacity.
It does, yes.
Which it really wasn't before.
Correct. So that's, that's my ultimate goal, is to have an actual workable fee schedule and a workable ordinance, because, you know, and I'm sure, you know, folks try to find...
No, they don't.
Whatever, they try to find whatever opportunity they can to see where the gaps are, and we had some gaps in the, in the original ordinance.
Absolutely. And then how, and then the last question, how's the value of the structure determined? Does that change?
The value of structure, we, it's supposed to be appraised value or fair market value. What we typically do is, if someone's building a new building, I ask for a signed copy of their AIA contract giving me a value of the construction, and it's the structure and the land. So I need the cost of the land plus the structure, 1% of that, or whatever the fee schedule calls for. That's how we typically do it. Because it's easier that way, instead of asking someone who's building a new building to provide us an appraisal off of a set of plans on something that hasn't been constructed yet.
So, counsel, I'm going to ask you to walk this on, to be introduced tonight. Now, if you have more questions about it, I'd encourage you to ask Mayor or Eric, and if you, if you were to come back at the next council meeting and you felt like it needed significant editing, we would have to...
Sure.
...at that point in time reintroduce it, but that's not impossible to do.
Understood.
So I guess that's a worst-case scenario. Otherwise, I'd ask you to just review it between, you know, I'd ask you to introduce it tonight and then review it between now and the next meeting, and get with Eric if you have some questions and...
Yeah. The biggest thing I'll caution you is, you know, the fees are very specific on the report that they provided, and those are very specific calculated numbers.
Right.
So we really don't have a lot of room, or any truly, to adjust those fees, because that's what the report gave us, and that's what legally we should, we should use. That was the whole purpose of having them do the first ordinance and do this restudy.
Numbers or percentages?
The percentages are what they are. The numbers, actually, the percentages just reflect the numbers. So, you know, for the single-family, it's 5,830, and 500 goes to fire, 500 goes, those percentages are just strictly, that's actually...
Basically, what you're saying is, is the only thing, the material that we could really try to edit would be...
My definitions, how we did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the percentages we put in there for actually Jill and the Finance Department, because when we issue a permit and we receipt that, they just see commercial impact fee. They don't know how that's allocated. So the percentages are given to her, so she knows, okay, 20% of this goes here, 15% of it goes here, 50% of it goes here.
All right, we've got four minutes.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and let them set up for our next council. We'll be back in a few minutes.